I'd like to call to order the Committee of a Whole for September 23rd. If the clerk could please read the rule.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Right.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
At this time, we have the minutes for September 9th. And Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the minutes from September 9th, 2019.
I have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously. At this time, this is the public's opportunity to make public comment. If you would like to make a public comment, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment?
Johnson-Salise. I just want to talk about recreational micro-business for medical, for recreational marijuana in Lansing. I don't think that it should be only four locations, one per ward. It should be, it should be many different businesses open up to, to other community because it just gives only four people to control the market. And, and I don't think that's, that's right. Also, I don't, I don't think that the cap from, from having 75 grow operations, that 75 should drop to 55 in 2021. And last, the designation consumption establishment is one per ward. I also think that it should be as many as possible, like, because I don't think one person should control per ward of consumption of marijuana. So that's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Loretta, stand away, and I want to talk about budget priorities. And you'll be hearing from me every time I can be down here from now till the day you pass the next budget. Your handout here says that your priorities include promoting a vibrant and safe blah, 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 community. Your challenge is to do that. I know that you guys try very hard. I know that you guys have worked harder with this administration than previous ones and have achieved more than you have achieved in the past with other administration. But there is more to be done. And your continuing on there, it says you are going to work to provide core services and infrastructure efficiently, effectively, et cetera, to maintain safety. There is a huge challenge there. Our times of response for police and fire have nearly doubled from previous years in the last three to four years. It is not acceptable at this point in time for it to take 10 minutes for a police officer to show up on a non-priority call. And that is fortunate if you get one then. They're so overworked and so stretched and so short-staffed that very often you can hear on the scanner calls that go holding three and four and five hours. Sometimes they hold that long, and then the person calling is told, file a report the next day because the cops can't get there at all. So you have a challenge, and we're putting it in front of you. We don't need or want all the fluff that is in the budget, even yet. We want police. We want fire. We want roads. We want sidewalks. We want code compliance. And the rest can and should and must wait. It cannot be a balancing act any longer between what you want, what you need, and what would be nice to have. It's down to the wire. It's down to what you need. It is your job, it says here, whereas the city council would like to continue its commitment if funding is available to blah, 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 maintain and improve city infrastructure and provide for police and fire and local roads resources. There's no question. It isn't up to the administration. It is up to you. If it says if funding is available, that should be deleted. It's your job to be there and make sure that funding is available, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Hello. Steve Monti, 1712 Stanley Court. So I'm sure you guys all read Prop 1, but you might have skipped over the part 8.1, Section J, where it says that you shall basically a plan to promote and encourage participation in the marijuana industry by people from communities that have been disproportionately impacted by marijuana prohibition and enforcement, and to positively impact those communities. So I, I'm not seeing any plans for that in, in this whole ordinance for one. I see zero. And I've heard prior conversation about, well, it's not a problem in the city. So that tells me that either you're telling me that there's no communities that have been disproportionately affected by marijuana prohibition, or that you simply are ignoring them and, and don't care about making things right. I think this is blatantly obvious when you look at the, how many licenses are given to wealthy, capitalized entrepreneurs. Five times the amount that you're proposing giving to the micro-business, the little person. You're going to give one per ward for a total of four in the whole city, while you're going to get five times that many licenses to, to the people who already have the money? That, that's not helping these, these people that have been negatively affected. So for starters, you could at least put them on equal footing and say, for each MMFLA licensed facility, we're going to have at least one from a little guy. I doubt that some of you up there personally told me to my face, you prefer working with the big guys. But it is your duty to follow this proposition. It was, it was enacted, and if you guys aren't going to do that, then we're going to have to continue to call you out on perpetuating the injustices of this drug war. Get with the now. This is an attempt to monopolize something that's meant to empower a community. This is an opportunity for any working person who's struggling to make their paychecks. They have an opportunity to grow, manufacture, and produce something and sell it. That's, that's the American dream. They get full vertical integration on a small scale. It's not major competition. But I have a sinking suspicion that some of these big-moneyed investors are telling you, we don't want to compete with the little guys. And, you know, prove me wrong.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Melina Brand, Ward 1. I want to urge you guys to support the social equity bit that was in Prop 1 that is not in this current ordinance. As a director of a nonprofit that serves, that serves low-income people and people of color without the social equity bit, that would be very disastrous for our city. People of color have been disproportionately hurt by this racist war on drugs that is continuing via institutional ordinances like this, leaving them out and, as Steve said, without giving them equal footing. And letting the big businesses in will just, you're just saying to the citizens that you're not prioritizing us. So please, I urge you to support the social equity bit. Put it back in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Seeing no one, we'll move on in the agenda. We're going to take Item B first, and then if we have time, we will work on our budget priorities. As we start on the medical marijuana ordinance, I'm going to ask the city attorney to give us an overview, and then we will, there is a memo attached to the ordinance, and we will go through the different points of the memo that we have in front of us. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam President. The ordinance you have in front of you is an amendment to the existing ordinance that is on the, on the records of the city. It's an ordinance that is in the zoning section of the code, but it is also, it also has licensing features in it. The new ordinance amendments are put in place because of the ballot issue for what is called adult-use recreational marijuana. And the, the structure that is set up is that, whereas under medical marijuana statute, the medical marijuana statute, you had to opt in. In this particular situation, you have to notify the state that you have to opt out. Otherwise, you automatically come in, and then there are no restrictions or guidelines for recreational marijuana. So this ordinance takes the current ordinance and modifies it. It changes many things. For example, it eliminates the Medical Marijuana Commission and all of the levels or steps of appeal that were under the other ordinance. In working through the other ordinance and looking at the license application process, it became very burdensome, very cumbersome, leading to lawsuits. So this eliminates the Medical Marijuana Commission and also streamlines the appeal process. The other significant feature is the elimination of the zoning board of appeals provision for distance limitations. The, there are some changes to the zoning in terms of the buffering distances, whereas the old ordinance had in it the provision that from parks, it was 500 feet or 1,000 feet, whatever the number, it was 500 feet from parks with playground equipment. Now it's 500 feet from parks. So that's an elimination. The new ordinance is location-based. So in other words, you license the location instead of the individual. For those medical marijuana licenses that have been issued, under the state law, they have a preference for the recreational license. And we have made sure that we added some grandfathering, non-conforming use language in the ordinance also, just so it's clear. We have the opinion that they were authorized, but we wanted to be clear in the ordinance that no one gets shut down. It's currently licensed and operating under the state with a medical marijuana license. The, there is a limitation on provisioning centers. Currently, under the medical marijuana ordinance, 25 licenses were authorized to be issued. 20 have been issued, and I believe the last five have now been issued. There were a number of projections over the last week or so. The new ordinance allows for a total of 28 licenses. We believe that the, those licenses, those numbers had to be increased because of the competitive language that's found in the state law. There are new types of provisions in the ordinance on designated smoking areas. There are what are called the micro-businesses. And micro-businesses are entities that are allowed to grow 150 plants, process and package and sell to those that are 21 years or over, but not allowed to sell to dispensaries. Those are limited to light industrial and heavy industrial districts. And under this ordinance, there are one, one per ward. The designated consumption area also is an area for the consumption of marijuana. It's one per ward. It's limited to commercial, wholesale, light and heavy industrial. Let's see, the, other than that, I believe we've covered pretty much. You have the memo that your research assistant put together, and it basically is a summary of the ordinance. There's this issue of social equity. That social equity comes in the state statute where it's so-called social equity. But it's an encouragement to the state in adopting its rules. I know there's been discussion here about social equity. There is nothing in the record to justify social equity provisions. City councils, municipal corporations have to be not acting in an arbitrary and capricious manner. It must show, when there is a charge of arbitrary and capriciousness, it must show a compelling city interest to, to survive a lawsuit against that. So for, to put into an ordinance an allocation of licenses based on these social equity principles without adequate testimony, without adequate evidence in the record, I would advise that it is subject to challenge on the basis of being arbitrary and capricious. Is that a summary good enough?
Thank, thank you. The council held. The, do you have a quick question before we start going through the points, or?
Well, it was on that topic, but I guess it's not a question. It's just maybe some information for the record, since the record's inadequate as it is. So I don't know whenever I can put that on, an hour later.
Go ahead.
So just, you know, I'm sorry I missed the last three weeks on a planned vacation, but I read some of the stuff about the social equity piece and just some medical marijuana ordinance that I can appreciate everybody's been working very hard on in public safety and out here. But I just came from an expungement summit. They needed attorneys, because everybody bailed on them, of people that's trying to expunge their record. It was at Union Missionary Baptist Church. I got to help one person. But as far as a compelling city interest, we have an interest of the city to have our citizens, if eligible, be able to expunge some of their convictions because of all the things that it does for them collaterally moving forward. And you know all about the jobs. I mean, this body's fully aware. So by having, the statute is written now, the state statute, you cannot have more than one felony or more than two misdemeanors. So some people, in a single incident, maybe they, I don't know, were dealing drugs or using drugs, or did something else and had marijuana in their pocket. That in itself is going to be one misdemeanor. If they do that again, or have another misdemeanor for something else, maybe they got in a fight that day, got an assault and battery and a possession of marijuana, they already have two misdemeanors. So anything else, it's just a lot of people that are prevented from moving forward on that. So that's some information for why there's a compelling city interest. If that was the only holdup for that piece, maybe I'm sure we can all think of other reasons to add to the record.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I, I think that, that the most important thing to remember about the way that social, and we can structure social equity any way we want to because we are the legislative body, but the way that it was structured at the state, the preference was given first and foremost to a resident that could prove they'd lived in that city for five years or more. The social equity piece doesn't even address the other things unless the person is a resident. And we, we sit up here and we make rules that push local ordinances, local hiring, local, you can't get a tax abatement unless you hire local workers. You've got to, but we're not going to promote local entrepreneurs in the process? Like, that's, to me, the biggest issue here, is that we can conflate this with race, we can conflate it with ideas of ignorance of the business community, but it's not that. It is actually written to give preference first and foremost to a resident of the community so that any financial benefit that is gained from this industry stays in the community and benefits a resident of that community. The secondary tier of social equity is if they meet that threshold of being in the community for five years, they get a certain bump. We talked about it being financial. It doesn't have to be financial. It can be in the scoring. They also have issues with marijuana convictions. Could be misdemeanor, could be felony. But those are folks who have been, as of yet, barred from application on many jobs, not just these marijuana applications. And then the third one was, and I don't even care if that stays in, but it was preference to somebody who's actually served as a caregiver in the past, and that's, but that was using the state as an example. I don't care what we do as far as what language we put in there to promote local residents and folks who have been barred by conviction. I made suggestions last week. I don't, we can come up with something here. I have written proposals. But please do not, do not waste the opportunity to promote local entrepreneurs in this industry when they can be promoted. And to allow folks who have been barred by past practice from having an opportunity, there's only eight licenses that, that will be affected by this. There's only eight. So I think we should make sure that we open that up to our own residents and the like.
Okay. The, going through the bullet points on the changes to the ordinance, as everyone is aware, this is medical, or this is marijuana operations, which include both medical and recreational. I know that there was a question, Mr. City Attorney, at one time, why didn't we have a ordinance for each? Can you expound on why the decision was made to have just one ordinance covering both?
Well, first of all, we've had experience with working under the medical marijuana ordinance. So there are terms and practices and activities that we're accustomed to under medical that would be applicable also to the recreational. Secondly, there is a preference that's being given to the medical marijuana licensees to have a first choice at the recreational license. And thirdly, it was decided that because of the experience with the medical marijuana, it was best to go to a location-based method of selecting licenses, simply because we've already issued licenses under medical marijuana to, to places where we know the locations are, they're properly zoned. And for that reason, and just a matter of efficiency of putting it all in one place for the public, we decided to put it all in one ordinance.
All right. Thank you. The next was the elimination of the Medical Marijuana Commission, leaving the appeal process to the city clerk. I think you had indicated before this was based on recommendations that came through as dealing with the Medical Marijuana Ordinance and recommendations that you received from the clerk as well. This is not something that was done by the committee. It was something that was recommended as part of this ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. It's a result of operations under the medical marijuana licensing experience.
Okay. Next adds the following recreational licenses. There's marijuana retailer, marijuana processor, marijuana micro-business, and designated consumption establishment. Those are the, the additional licenses that are included in that. Next is that the maximum number of both medical marijuana provisioning centers and marijuana retailers is 28. The prior was 25. So just for clarification, with the three additional, could a medical marijuana establishment also apply for one of those three additional licenses? Or are these just reserved for marijuana retailers?
This could, any person could, could apply for one of these three licenses. It's not reserved for anyone.
Okay. So.
That's why we're required to be competitive under the statute. So now with the additional three, we believe we've met that test.
Okay. So this also means that of the 25 that are currently, that currently have medical marijuana, they can also sell recreational marijuana. Councilmember Jackson, you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. So I don't necessarily have an opinion on the number yet. I'm still looking at it, and I know it's been worked out a lot in public safety. But I just wanted to clarify the way that the city attorney read the old ordinance as it having a cap of 25, being recreational at 25. But really, just by the way the language and the technicalities and the new vote, there's really no cap on recreational and a 25 cap on medical.
No. Good.
I, I just want to clarify something so it didn't come out wrong. For recreational, there would still have to be a separate application for recreational. So it isn't an automatic thing. You have to.
So.
But under the state, there's a preference given for the state license.
So the total of 28, you can have, at an, at an establishment, you can do both. So that is the cap.
I understand that in the new ordinance, but I'm just, the way that he read the old ordinance, because it doesn't even mention recreational marijuana.
Correct.
Therefore, there is no cap because it's not mentioned in the ordinance. I was just trying to just make that clear, just because, you know, I missed a little bit, and that's how I understand it to be.
It sits on page 26 of the ordinance. You have the maximum number of locations for both medical marijuana and retailers shall be capped at 28.
President.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I think the, the old ordinance doesn't provide for recreational.
Period.
Is what we're, so November 1st, if we don't do anything, I think, is when it, we could be open to multiple recreation. But the old ordinance doesn't provide for recreation at all. So the old ordinance is just 25 medical marijuana, as it's written. But come November 1st, then I think it would be different.
And, and I think the important thing is if we do not have an ordinance in place by November 1st, that's where we fall, and we've not opted out, that's where we fall with the fact that anyone who has a license in the state then can apply through the state to have a license here in Lansing, because we have no, nothing, no framework in place.
And I think we're saying the same thing now.
Okay. All right. That takes us to the next. The maximum number of marijuana micro-businesses is one per ward. This is a new license that grows, processes, and sells marijuana. I think, and anyone from the committee can jump in, I think the reason that we looked at one per ward, again, we're looking at starting this ordinance out. What we see after the ordinance is in effect and, and look at and can come back and make changes. But if you have it uncapped with, or a larger number, then it's much harder to pull it back with that. Councilmember Hussein or Councilmember Spitzley, did you want to add anything to that? No?
No, I, you know, I think, you know, the, the thought process, again, is still allowing for, you know, the grows in the processing for the ones that are in the queue right now, and, and allowing for some, some business growth, but recognizing that we need to have, you know, a cap on the number. But the applications that are in the queue right now will not, will still be processed.
I, I think you're down to the grow facilities.
I'm sorry.
We're still, we're at the micro-businesses.
Oh, I, I apologize.
That's okay. Not a problem. Not a problem. Next is the establishment of a Next is the establishment of a designated consumption establishment, which is one per ward. We also said in the ordinance that none of these can have liquor licenses. So that's something else that was added into that. Yes?
I think we were still trying to figure out for these type of clubs, whether or not there was any, like, separate licensing too for them as well.
Yeah, that's one of the things that the city attorney's still working on. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. Now, when you just said about no liquor license, I know as other social clubs, they're allowed to bring liquor or alcohol in, this will prohibit that as well?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other? Next is the cap on the number of medical marijuana grow and the grow facilities at 75, but beginning as of January 1st, 2029, as licenses are denied or issued licenses are not renewed, then the total number of locations will be reduced by 55. This is similar to attrition. This is not taking away anyone's license. This would be a matter if it was denied or, or they chose not to renew their license. And I think the thought process came on this is, we've heard a number of things from our economic development about the grow spaces and the different challenges and the fact that there was other development, and a number of those had been bought up. And I think part of what we were looking at was, again, the fact that when this ordinance was first done, there, all the rules were not in place, and now you have the stacking of licenses, which means a grow facility can have more than just the one license at that location. Councilmember Jackson.
Just a question on the criteria for denying one of these, either non-renewed or denied. I guess if they're business as usual, and their numbers and their safety and everything are in compliance, would that be, I mean, is there going to be more competitive people where they would deny that person for some reason outside of?
I, I believe that the application and the rules that are in effect with the city clerk, because he's the one that has put that together, is if they have violated any of the ordinances or the things that are out there that would put them in non-compliance, is the only way a license is denied. It's not a matter of saying, you know, that Brian Jackson, you, you brought your, your paperwork in, you want your license, and guess what? I decided to deny it. That's, that's not the way that would work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. Could I get a legal clarification on what it means if a license is not renewed? If we are licensing locations now and not owners, it's feasible that the license could be transferred to someone else, and the location would not cease doing business. Would that continue then in that vein until the building is literally vacated of the business?
It's our understanding that you can transfer a license as long as they meet all the requirements, so that they, they would still then have that, that license. If for some reason they didn't meet those requirements, then they wouldn't.
Okay.
Mr. City Attorney, is that?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
There are transfer provisions in the ordinance.
Okay. Any, okay. Next is no medical marijuana provisioning center, marijuana retailer, marijuana microbusiness, or designated consumption establishment shall be permitted the sale, consumption, or the serving of alcohol. And that answers your question, Councilmember Garza. Next is the, regarding the buffering, the change to that, was it still the same amount of footage from parks? The only difference is that we removed the requirement of having three pieces of playground equipment. Councilmember Jackson.
I just have two questions, just for my information. And one goes back to the, the consumption of alcohol. I was just curious if other social clubs, like, either in the state or in other states, have that same provision? I'm just curious if there's any, if there was anybody that looked at that, because I know the laws, you can't be impaired to drive for sure, and you can't have an open container of alcohol in your car and things like that. I was just wondering what they got off that.
Were you getting an answer to that?
Yes. They're prohibited by the state unless we say yes.
So, so we have that, we have that ability. And again, a social club who doesn't have a license can still be a social club. We're not, this, this has, only affects those that might be looking at wanting to be a designated smoking area. Next is, Kathy, or Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I think that just prompted me to clarify that, too. What do you mean by they can be a social club, this only affects the ones that want to be designated as a social club?
Now, meaning there are other, the Elks Club is out there, the Knights of Columbus is out there. If they chose to be, to apply for a license, to have, be a designated consumption establishment, they wouldn't be able to serve alcohol. But that doesn't mean that they can't still be a club. This is only dealing with marijuana.
Okay.
Did I make my, okay. Maybe I didn't make it clear enough. Councilmember Jackson.
I forgot I had two parts in that.
Okay.
And this is just for my information, because I missed a lot, and I wasn't in public safety, and I didn't check all the notes. But the, the buffer zone to parks?
Yes.
I was always curious, like, what the perceived harm is. Is it that people are going to go buy medical or recreational and then go to the park and use, and there'll be kids there? Or that the kids will see that there is this building that, mommy, what is that? They sell marijuana there? Or is it that a kid is going to go, because he's nearby in a park, and go up there and say, hey, can you get this for me? And then go back to the park? I was just curious.
I, I think there's a number of those potential issues that, that are out there. I think that you're also looking at the fact that this is currently in the ordinance for anyone that is establishing a provisioning center. And the only change in this was to remove the playground equipment, because the committee decided that a park is a park. Just because there isn't playground equipment doesn't mean there aren't children that are utilizing that. And part of our experience, when we started working on this, is we had a number of provisioning centers that opened up near parks. And we had one on Cedar Street that was right next door to a park that was, had a soccer team, that kids were out there all the time. And you had, to be perfectly honest, people sitting in lawn chairs, toking out, you know, in the parking lot. Since then, you know, there have been different ordinances and things in place that have eliminated that type of activity. So the goal is to try to have something that's safe, that where children will access more freely and not have to deal with some of those, those types of things. You're welcome. Next is to prohibit the consumption of marijuana in public places except as provided by state law. So that's no different than alcohol. You can't be walking down the street, consuming a beer. This is the same, this is the same type of thing. Then the option to, the, to appeal to the zoning board of appeals was eliminated, and there are no variances permitted from the buffered use. And this was also a recommendation that came from the city clerks as they looked at this. Okay. Are there any questions on that? So that is the ordinance in a nutshell on, and what we've worked on. The majority of the things that were in here were ones that came from the mayor's office. We had conversations with the mayor about the, the changes and some of the things that, some of the things that we were looking at. And Councilmember or Vice President Spatafor.
I just had a quick clarification. For the option to appeal to the zoning board of appeals was eliminated, there will be no variances permitted from buffered uses?
Yes.
That's going forward, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and as you heard the city attorney say, anything that's in place is grandfathered in, and this does not affect them.
Thank you for the clarification.
Can I follow up?
Yes.
If you would turn to page 49, section four, is the grandfathering clause. Very last page, yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Just because I like to try to think of it on both sides. I'm thinking of a scenario where you have the 28 in place, and you have the no variances, only, you know, the limitations as it is. And then one of those 28s goes out of business, and a different store comes in. And then now, and maybe that happens five times, maybe it happens 10 times, but now you have that many less spaces of possible store provisioning, any location, but no place to maybe go up to 28 again. Because all new applicants wouldn't have spaces available that's acceptable, presumably, but presumably other spaces might open up as well. But the fact that it's within certain, basically, pockets of the city that's, fits the requirements, then that's just a limited amount of storefronts or stores. I just wonder if that was thought of also.
May I, Mr.?
Yes, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, we, in drafting the ordinance, the Public Safety Committee looked at those issues in terms of the ordinance not becoming exclusionary. Now, we know that as time goes on, you could have transfers of locations for, for these facilities, and they're still going to have to, the new locations are going to have to meet the buffering distances, no question about it. The planning board also looked at that issue and approved the ordinance from the zoning perspective unanimously from all those that were there. So that issue was explored, and it was determined through the planning board and public safety that the current draft is not exclusionary under a zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Anything else? Councilmember Dunbar.
So is this the portion where I would suggest amending it to include social equity?
Do you have something in writing?
I do. I have to print it. Yep, it was prepared with, and it is reflective, it would be on page 20 of 49.
Well, what we'd like to do is see the, it in, in writing so that we can review it as we're looking at it, so.
Can we move for a five-minute recess?
Yeah, we can move for. You're going to send it to me? Well. A law has it? Yeah. Yeah. Yep. In the meantime, I can read it. It basically substitutes, it injects a 22 in between 21 and the existing 22. So these are the, these are the things that are requested to be submitted in the application. What section? Sorry. 1801 what? It's the license application submission, which starts on 13 of 49. But, so 13 of 49 is where that section begins, and there are many, many pages that count off 1 through 21 of things that need to be submitted with the license application, that need to be considered in the scoring process, including the morals, good order, order plan, all of those things. So at the end of that, the proposal would be to add a 22 that basically would say if any ownership interest in the applicant. You sent 50 pages. Do I need to print all 50 pages? No, it would be 20 and 21 of 50. It's on 20 and 21 of 50, in the, in the one that she sent you. And again, it's, it's, it's basically saying if any one with ownership interest in the applicant organization, ownership of more than 25%, has the following. And the first is proof of residency within the city for the last five years. The second is proof of a conviction for marijuana-related offenses. And the third is proof of registration as a patient or caregiver under the MMFLA. And that mirrors the state. But it gives, again, it's preference to those, and it's only for those two industries. So 25% ownership in the applicant of anybody for a marijuana microbusiness license or a consumption license would execute some type of proof of residency, again, proof of a marijuana-related conviction, and then a history as a patient or caregiver under MMFLA.
And before I call on Councilmember Spitzley, isn't this exactly what you just told us you didn't advise us to do?
There, this is an ordinance amendment being introduced by a certain council member.
Yeah, I, I get that.
You know, it's.
I, I got that.
Our draft. First of all, on the residency, I question whether five years is arbitrary or not. And a proper standard would be proof or use of longevity or residency status for a period of time. The clerk can evaluate and maybe assign points based upon longevity in the city. I just picking five years.
But that, that's the clerk's, when, because we've not assigned any points. We have not.
Right.
What we've done is created a license that he has put together, the application and the review, and, and those things.
And he assigns the points.
Yes. Councilmember Spitzley.
That can be, that can be in consideration rather than just picking five years. Patient or caregiver, probably that would go to the weight of being experienced, perhaps, with the marijuana. We get back to the, the other one about the conviction. I don't think there's enough evidence on the record to say there's a compelling city interest, compelling state interest in using that as criteria.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I think, listening to what Councilmember Dunbar has proposed, and then listening to Jim's concerns, and then hearing what you said, it seems to me that this is something that is already, the residency and some of the other stuff is already considered as part of the, the scoring system, the point system for, for the clerk. And that maybe what, what I'm thinking, and I have touched base with the clerk and the mayor about it, is maybe this is something that needs to go as part of scoring and outside of the, the ordinance. the ordinance. There, that way, we kind of, we don't open ourselves up to an arbitrary and capricious, um, challenge. It is something that we can do as part of the scoring, and it doesn't require us to, um, change the ordinance as it's written. And it's for micro businesses, and you can do it for a consumption, so for the for micro businesses and the for consumption, but working with the clerk's office to establish, um, some sort of criteria by which, um, residency, all these things that we're talking about right now can be incorporated as part of the scoring. That seems to me the cleanest way to do this, um, and it, and it kind of, the cleanest way to, you know, for us, for this ordinance not to be challenged, the cleanest way to incorporate it and incorporate some sort of, I, I, I mean, social equity, if that's what you want to call it, um, into the, the process for micro businesses and for the consumption businesses, is to do it as part of the scoring.
Councilmember, uh, Vice President Spatafor, then.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. Maybe to law or councilmember Dunbar, if applicable, is, is written down, um. Nope, never mind. I will draw my question.
All right, councilmember Dunbar, and then councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. The, the points that are awarded are based on the criteria that are listed in the ordinance thus far. Everything in there, the execution of morals, the financial resources, the odor plan, the number of jobs, the economic impact, gap standards in accounting, the amount of money that they have in the bank, the bonds that they have, those are all spelled out in here. I think that it would be even more capricious to say that we leave it to the clerk to do it and not have it spelled out in here. I also think that, um, I mean, I don't care if residency is ten years, I don't care if it's, I just went by what the state says, state says five years. I also think that the proof of whether or not somebody has been affected by a conviction is in the fact that they disclose the fact that they have the conviction, because they have not ever been able to apply for a license, ever, under the existing laws with a felony conviction, with two misdemeanors. So, by right, anyone who puts down on section twenty-two that they have a conviction is demonstrating that they have been affected by these marijuana laws, by right. It doesn't matter whether there's masses of them, and we know that there are, we know that there are. But the idea is, by the fact of putting it down here, they are demonstrating that no other way, they would never, they would just not, under MMFLA, under this, they would not be allowed to get a license. And so, this is what opens the door for that, and I don't see how that gets challenged. You can maybe enlighten me on that one. The caregiver one, particularly with growing the plants and distributing the plants as a caregiver, um, almost more so than a patient. I almost, I might even be fine with it was just a caregiver and not a patient, but I'm introducing these for discussion because they are relevant, um, and I think that, I mean, yes, you're, you're right, the clerk can probably do this on his own, and then when we have a different city clerk who has a different idea of, of what this is, then we have no control over it. I mean, for, just to be clear, he's got to figure out what the execution of morals, good order, and general welfare mean in scoring.
Okay, I have.
It's very obvious how to, how to score on, on other things that are not capricious.
I don't mean to enter a debate on this, but just one statement. We've had sixteen lawsuits on medical marijuana aimed at arbitrary and capricious decisions in the ordinance. There were fifty-five licenses denied this week or so. We expect more litigation. The marijuana, um, commercial retailers and establishments, they are, they're not shy about filing a lawsuit, um, based on due process, arbitrary and capricious. We've had them, and, and so I just want to say, uh, that's why our advice is try to be as conservative as possible in dealing with this new area. It is a new area.
Which could be amended.
Which could be amended in the future, yes.
I've got councilmember Jackson, Vice President Spatafor, and councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, and I appreciate the conversation, but it sounds like the city attorney needs some compelling city interests for all of those, for us to consider it, and for him to feel confident when he goes into a lawsuit with his team, and they have to look at our reasoning and rationale. So, for the first one, um, residency, let's not just say five years. When did medical marijuana start? Two thousand and eleven, twelve? So, that's when a lot of people got in the business, especially around Lansing, when it was a different outlook. A lot of people got their training, their experience, their resumes are gonna say, from that side on, whether they can write or not, I'm not sure, whether they got into the industry in the, um, legal way, or if they were trying to figure it out and hoping not to get denied in the process, I'm not sure, but that's where their background and experience is. So, let's use that number, since two thousand and eleven, or twelve, or whatever it was, thirteen, I'm not sure, fourteen? Eight. All right. As far as the marijuana conviction part, the first concern I have is whether, what is the state statute for even applying to get into it? Because I don't know what it is, but I would support, um, I would support adding that for the compelling reason that a person who has this conviction has been listing it in all his previous job applications and things, and for many cases, being discriminated against and denied for those reasons. So, that person doesn't have the same skills and ability to move forward in other industries. So, if we give this person, and I don't think it'll be a lot of them, that's made it that far, and it, it's not an automatic pass, it's some points to score, if you give that person an advantage, I think it would, um, help the city in many ways. One, the city's taxes could go up, because if it's a resident, for example, um, because you're also, could be a resident, but they're gonna have a job, they're not gonna have to go undercover, or whatever it is, or try to rely on finding another job with their, their background. Instead, their whole family is, is gonna benefit. It's the same benefits that being employed has on people, is gonna be a benefit for this person, because the option otherwise would be probably not being employed, but probably still in the business and the industry, because there's not a lot of other opportunities for someone like that. So, I think it would be in our interest to give that little boost.
Okay. Vice President Spatafor, then councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Spitzley, then councilmember Dunbar.
I'll just leave it at this, um, for the second round of scoring for the five, the clerk did adjust his criteria for those five, and so he can, he can, and he has already did some adjustments, um, for scoring for the five after the first wave. So, it can be done as part of the scoring. I, I think that that's probably the cleanest. If we don't, um, we, it, it's gonna be a long time before we can agree, if we can even agree on this. I don't think it's something, we've worked, this, this ordinance is here, we've got a deadline, I don't think this is the, I don't think this is the place to do it. I think the scoring is the cleanest, and then we can work with the clerk to make sure that the scoring reflects, you know, the concerns, um, for that, for the for micro businesses and for the for consumptions. I just, so I, I, it can be done, it has been done, and so that's, that's all I wanted to say about it.
Councilmember Dunbar, then Vice President Spatafor.
Thank you. I believe that if the clerk were here, he would say that he has adjusted the scoring. He adjusted the number of points that were scored in categories that already exist. He did not create new categories that do not exist in the ordinance on which to judge whether or not somebody gets a license. So, if the commission, or whoever was scoring, said that they got five points or one point for something, he took the leeway to adjust to a three or a four. He gave it shades of gray. He did not create another category of scoring on which to, on which to grade somebody. And I think that, if he does, and it's not listed, that's what's gonna get you in a lawsuit, because everyone that's denied gets a copy of their score sheet, and if they're denied for not having points that are not listed in the ordinance specifically, or that somebody else got more points for something that's not listed in that ordinance, I get it, it can be done that way. I think that it is a much higher legal threshold if we do leave it to the clerk. Residency, again, this seems like such a no-brainer to me. We make sure that we hire local, we make sure that if we're going to give any kind of tax abatements, we're looking for local labor, local, 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 but not local entrepreneurs. How could we not want to give preference to somebody who lives in this city, who would be making money off of this industry, who would be keeping the money here, not sending it to Colorado, not sending it to Vegas, not sending it to New York, not sending it even somewhere else in the state? Why is that so difficult? I don't understand. And the, and the marijuana conviction thing, that just speaks to itself, that speaks to itself. This industry has harmed numerous people, and just because, I mean, let's talk about the state, okay? The state chose nineteen places where they felt that it was most necessary to go, um, recruiting local residents and local people who had been affected by criminal offenses related to marijuana. East Lansing made the list. Some kid from Birmingham who got a marijuana conviction is gonna get a preference over somebody that lives in the city of Lansing for any length of time, that, I, I mean, I just, I find that was problematic in and of itself, and we have to, we have to account for that. That's not an urban core area that's dealing with a disproportionate amount of marijuana enforcement. But that's what happened at the state, I don't like it, um, but I also think that we are the legislators here, and we get to choose. And I agree, there are people that are challenging the points. They are challenging it on the, the gray area of, of, did I have enough money? Did I, did I meet the threshold for the odor stuff? Did that guy have a better, uh, plan for that? It's very cut and dry. If we could create a residency requirement, you either do or don't meet it. You either prove or don't prove that you live in the city of Lansing. You either have or don't have a marijuana conviction. You either have been a caregiver or a patient, or you're not. There's no gray area in that. So, I don't see how that can be arbitrary and capricious. And I, I'm sorry to get heated about it, but it really does, um, it's very important to me. You can leave it to the clerk, I get it. I get it that, that this will all probably happen if the clerk does it, but it won't be codified, and I think that you'll get more legal challenge from that.
Vice President Spatafor.
I think councilmember Dunbar answered my question, but I was going to suggest on page thirteen, line three nineteen. Thirteen of forty-nine, line three one nine, in thirteen hundred dot zero four.
Page thirteen.
Line three one nine. On forms provided by the city clerk and shall contain at least the following, leaving a little ambiguity there to allow the clerk to adjust as necessary if things are, are not working, but I think you were clear that that was not.
Okay, we, we have a motion already on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, first of all, we have to address this motion. Is there, is this to the current motion? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I'm asking that we support this motion, and when we say that now's not a good time, I think it is the best time, because it's the deliberations designed to go over this. I know public safety did a lot of hard work, and it's a good, pretty much a good ordinance, but I don't think that this is an unreasonable ask to add. Time's not an issue, because, um, we're doing these now, because we tend to have a public hearing and a vote, is that the same day?
Yes, and, and again, this, this is not, this is done because of the deadline.
I understand.
That we are under.
I understand, there's a deadline, and that's the only reason why it's being passed that way. But my point is, is that that's not an unreasonable ask. You, we, I was, I only got to read some of the minutes and some of the articles and all that, but it's not like people don't support that idea, and it's not like it's a bad thing, and it's not like it's a hard add. We have to probably make one paragraph worth of things, so everything else can stay the same. Council and public safety and the mayor, you guys worked out, um, a lot of compromises already, I'm sure, and, and came up with a great ordinance that now we all get to deliberate and talk about. So, I'll just add that, kind of as a concession, almost, but it shouldn't be that way, we vote on this and we pass it, because you guys, of course, can, you know, it takes, what, five, six, I don't know how many for an amendment to pass, but that means we would need that many people to, to move it forward.
Councilmember, uh, or Vice President Spatafor.
Mr. City Attorney, could you provide some, not exhaustive, please, but some examples of what a felony conviction for marijuana would be?
Distributing over a certain amount, generally, uh, would be, uh, crossing state lines, perhaps, a federal. Possession has generally been a misdemeanor for sibling fraction.
In the language.
Even, even going way back when it wasn't, when, uh, a few years back, it was actually one that the, uh, it came under a certain section of the, uh, of the Homero City Code that allowed to be an expungement of the record after a certain period of time.
Thank you.
Can you make this brief?
Actually, that, that's a, that was a very good question, um, and actually, the way that it was written here, um, I might go so far as to, I mean, because there are misdemeanor offenses that are considered criminal, um, and there are, I would say nonviolent, um, and I, I would, I would ask if that wraps it up. Like, proof of conviction of a nonviolent marijuana-related criminal offense, would that wrap up misdemeanors and felonies in that regard? Would that, would that catch them? Because felony is not necessarily violent. Right, but that's what the business is.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, I just want to add on that. First of all, all marijuana convictions are gonna be nonviolent by nature. It's the other thing they add, like assault with a dangerous weapon, or, or having a firearm during it, but there's nothing in a marijuana statute that's gonna be violent.
Okay, perfect.
Also, there are convictions for felonies for being outside of the medical marijuana ordinance statute, weight-wise and stuff, so if somebody had too many plants, you're outside of it, so you get a felony. So, there's a lot of, any, any kind of type of violation to the statute, for the most parts, a felony unless it has to do with weight alone.
That's right, most of it.
Okay, that's the question, then, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm wrapping what I need to wrap in the description here.
We're not going to continue to try to write this on the floor. If this is your amendment, then we're gonna vote on the amendment. Okay? We have a motion on the floor for this amendment. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. All right, uh, councilmember, um, Spat, Vice President Spatafor, you had, um.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Chair's call.
Go ahead and do a roll call.
On the motion of the amendments, councilmember Wood?
No.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
No.
Councilmember Washington?
No.
Councilmember Hussein?
No.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
No.
Councilmember Jackson?
Councilmember, Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I apologize that I don't have anything for you, it was this evening, but I would like to propose amending line three nineteen of draft one F dated nine six two zero one nine, striking out all of and replacing it with at least.
Mr. City Attorney.
You can make that amendment, uh, what, what's going to have to happen also is that when the clerk develops the scoring criteria, we're going to have to clearly review it for arbitrary and capricious. To make sure it's not, um, that the standard is there, I'm sorry. We can do that, I wouldn't recommend it, though, because it doesn't leave certainty in the ordinance for the clerk, that's the problem. I mean, it would cause us to do another step to review what the clerk is doing in terms of a scoring document.
Are you advising against, or are you saying it's another step?
I would advise against this. I would advise against this.
Okay.
So, Vice President Spatafor, is your motion still out there? Are you withdrawing your motion?
The others have to say, and then-
Councilmember Spitzley, then Councilmember Washington, and Councilmember Jackson.
Talking, talking, just real quick, and I'm sorry, Jody, talking to the attorneys back here, there is a provision already in here where the clerk can ask for additional information as he sees fit. I think the concern was that if you say "at least," then-
Then there might give you less.
Yeah, yeah. So, you might, you might get an incomplete application if you say "at least." Is, is, is the concern? 499, page, line 499. Yep, we will. Page, page 20 of 49, 499, any other information requested by the clerk to assist in the review of the application?
Okay.
That's what they're saying, but go ahead.
I would draw my, that's actually, accomplishes exactly what I wanted, so.
All right. So, did you, he withdrew his motion. Do you still have a comment? Yes.
I've been quiet through this entire debate because, excuse me, I want it to be clear that my vote to not support this amendment comes squarely on the shoulders of the fact that this is what the mayor had brought forward, this is what the committee brought forward, and we were advised by the city attorney to not add that amendment. So it has nothing to do with my feelings about marijuana, or, I don't even know how many local people have the licenses. I know Mike Gordy is local, I know Sam Usman is local, I know Armando is local. I don't even know how many local people have licenses. But my vote was strictly on conversations with the mayor, the, the committee, and the city attorney.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I, I guess I just wonder about the characterization of the city attorney advising that we don't go with it. I think the city attorney said that there was not a compelling interest on the record, basically in the minutes, because that's the only record we have. I guess there's a video. So he couldn't fight it in a future court date, and for those reasons, because there's no interest on the record that it was. But since then, there's been comments, and I'm sure everybody could come up with more, that would put the interest on the record. So I guess I would have to ask the city attorney, are you advising we don't, like Councilwoman Washington said, you're advising we don't adopt or go forward with that motion proposed by Councilwoman Dunbar?
The motion was, was not supported, so that's a mute point at this point.
Well, Councilwoman Washington just mentioned the, for her, the record, the civil justice piece, or the equitable piece, and then she referenced that the city attorney said, for the reasons she's not taking it is because the city attorney said no, and some other reasons. But then that's what made me think, the city attorney didn't say no, he said that, what you said, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Did you want?
Clarify.
First of all, there's no requirement in the state law. The, the state law, in dealing with the topic of social equity, advises that there'd be rules that deal with this concept of social equity. It's in the statute, whatever, whatever that means. There is no, there's been no hearing, no record, nothing in the evidence before this body to support a proposition that there should be a different scoring for those who have had pre-state law convictions for marijuana. There's just nothing in the record. In being challenged, the challenge will come from other licensees who are denied a license because someone else got a license because of scoring for that feature, and there's nothing in the record. You get into an equal protection, due process argument, and in a court reviewing it is going to have to find, when it scrutinizes the decisions, it's going to have to find that there's a compelling state interest. And right now, you have nothing on the record that demonstrate that there's a compelling state interest to give a scoring preference to someone that has a marijuana-related conviction.
I guess-
Councilmember Spitzley, then.
I mean, just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be quick, it's just, this is really a great conversation and topic. So when do we have hearings where-
We, we have. We, we have had every single council, Public Safety meeting had an opportunity for public comment, for people to come forward. We announced this repeatedly, that we were having this down here tonight. We had three people that came down and spoke to it. We will be having the public hearing on the 30th and voting on the 30th. We have not, I have not received one email. I don't know if others have. I've not received one email asking that to be part of it. That's the type of record, not our, our interpretation or what we've heard. It's got to come from the public, and we haven't had that.
So we need somebody to come and say, I've had my life affected because I have convictions, and I'm having trouble moving forward and seeking and finding employment. We need that, because I thought that was like, for, pretty much known.
Mr. City Attorney.
Well, again, it's not one person, it's on the record, it has to be shown to be debated. It's hard to say when you cross that line, but right now, it's the line, there's, it's zero. That's what it is. And when does it get to the point where we could withstand a challenge? That's going to be in the judgment of the council.
Councilmember Spitzley, then Councilmember Dunbar, and then we need to start-
Again, I think, you know, I, I agree, it's a good conversation, but, you know, we've got, I, I still will maintain that, you know, this is something that can be handled, you know, in the scoring by the city clerk, and it can be, it can be addressed that way. You know, we're looking at page 20 of 49, thank you, line 499, that says, "Any other information requested by the city clerk to assist in the review?" You know, that opens the door for him to, you know, consider other factors and, and, and provide for that, for that review. And so I think that, you know, as we move forward, you know, that could be a way that addresses concerns for everybody, is to work with the city clerk, to develop, you know, and see if he's interested in developing, you know, criteria to do that. I think he is, but it, it's all in what it looks like. This program isn't going to start November 2nd, you know, they're, you're going to have to accept applications and do everything else, and so, you know, that might be a, a, an equitable resolution to this. That's all. I'm just trying to figure out how we resolve this and move forward. I think it's, you know, it may have merit, it does have merit, but within the confines of the ordinance, I don't think so. Thank you.
Councilmember Dunbar, then Councilmember Washington.
Thank you. Okay, first, everyone keeps jumping to the marijuana conviction as the thing. The number one issue with social equity is residency. Is there anyone up here who disagrees with the fact that we should be giving preference to residents? Seriously, that's what we're voting down. The number one thing of social equity at the state level is that residents in a community that are allowing these micro businesses and social clubs have a shot at owning the licenses. Residents. We are saying that residents don't get a preference in this process. In every other process that we do for brownfields and contractors and all that, we demand that they use local labor, but right now, we are not demanding that we see equitable representation from local entrepreneurs in this industry. I find that very difficult to swallow. I don't know how, everybody keeps hiding behind this criminal offense stuff, and yeah, that is a secondary thing. The marijuana conviction only comes in if you've already got residency, then you get more points. But the residency is the issue, and if we're not giving residents a preference, then how do we justify doing it anywhere else? We don't get challenged on brownfields, we don't get challenged on contracts for labor. We don't, we don't get sued and say, you can't give preference to, we've held that up in court. So why would it be any different for local residents being the entrepreneurs in this case? Second, if we're going to get challenged because we put it in an ordinance, that it's arbitrary and capricious to give points on this, turning it over to the city clerk to do the same behind closed doors without any scoring process delineated is worse. It's worse. If somebody loses and they can't demonstrate based on what's in the ordinance, what was scored, or if he shows up with scoring criteria that you're saying out here would get us sued, then we would get sued if the city clerk does that arbitrarily. So how can it be different for them to do it individually as opposed to us to spell it out in the ordinance? So those are my two questions. I guess the second one is to law, how can it be okay for the clerk to do it and not us, and not have that be a legal challenge? And the other thing is, who up here does not support local entrepreneurs being a part of this industry, because that's what you're voting against?
Yes. And then we have Councilmember Washington, and then we are moving on.
The, and again, the criteria that the clerk issues, it would not be benign closed doors, it would have to pass legal muster through our review. It must be related to the criteria that are in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Washington.
So then how could this get passed on to him? And it be a different legal-
Thank you, Madam President. Councilwoman Jackson, I, I understand what you're saying, and I think the thing that we need to really push for, and I am 100% behind it, is expungement of these, of these convictions. Because they just, we need to get them expunged and get them off the record, so no matter what type of job an individual wants to get, that is not on the record, and thank you for working on it. And I think that it's something that we have to move forward on. I don't think we can do this as a city body. Secondly, Councilwoman Dunbar, I really respect your passion. In all honesty, I respect your passion. I may not agree with what you're saying, but I respect it. I don't think if we give a liquor license to open up a liquor store, we can give preferential treatment to local people. As I said in the beginning, I don't know how many licenses are held by local people. I know the big ones are held by locals. The huge ones are held by locals. So I don't know how many we have already that are local, and I think that's something that we would have to know before we would even say this is an issue. I don't know who has the licenses. I do have faith in the clerk, that he will be fair and not capricious, and I do think we have to take into serious consideration when the city attorney advises us. But I understand, Councilmember Jackson, I'm with you 100%, and I really respect your position, Kathy. Thank you.
All right. In looking at our budget priorities, what I'd like to do is start going over a few of them that have been added and get some explanation. We will be taking these up on the 30th. We have on page eight, it was voted out from Public Safety Committee, so. We have the Councilmember Spatafor, if you would explain yours that you have here.
So item D on page eight is corridor facade grants, generate guidelines with LEAP describing the area and requirements for the distribution of the corridor, facade grants, and reviewed annually. I think I should say, review annually, but I think a lot of us were caught off guard by the change in the application. I don't necessarily disagree that downtown should be included in the facade grant, especially with a growing pot of money and a limit on how much, but I do think that the intent was to have that reviewed annually, and we pulled it out of the language, so I like to put it back. And that's not to say we're making a judgment on where it goes or not, just take a look at it.
Okay. Intergovernmental, Councilmember Jackson. We're on page eight.
So, we have the, where am I at here? Okay, yes. Designate funding for a city sustainability coordinator to implement the deliverables, findings, and recommended steps for the Lansing Climate Action Plan. And I would add, not only the action plan, because that's really slow right now for a lot of reasons that will come up later, nothing bad, but just really slow, like nothing's really happened. So if we don't have an action plan, to also implement other carbon footprint-reducing green initiatives, building retrofit, latest recommendations, try to get the most up-to-date grants, bring in some experts to talk about collaborations, so that's like an amendment. I'll add that, though, for next time.
Vice President Spatafor, Public Service Committee.
Yeah, so these actually aren't Public Service Committee priorities, or they, but they are now. They were the Public Service Board's priorities submitted to us and presented by members of that body. I don't feel the need to go through them one by one unless you infer that I do so, but they, these were recommended by the Public Service Board, they reviewed them, we had no problems with them, that we think they are wonderful and good, good goals for the city, and we would recommend including them in the council's priorities we deliver to the administration.
Okay. Also, at your, in your folder was the Disability Network capital area. If you remember when we had the discussion about parks and the accessibility and that, the diversity group that I'd been working with suggested that what we do is include the age-friendly parks proposal that they wrote. What they did was they went through all the parks and did an assessment of those parks and what ones needed, whether it was the fact that the parking places were too far from the, from the play areas, I mean, they, they went through each one of these. And what I would recommend is that these be added and allow the Parks Department to take a look at when they're putting their budget together, and pick the ones that they feel that they can work with, with some of the parks' money. But this does, the, this looks at all the parks that we have. Now, I know Public Safety looked at the ones that were under the Public Safety portion of the budget priorities. Planning and Development, I think, looked at those, and your, yours, you're looking at them on Friday. Okay. Yes, Vice President Spatafor?
Madam President, I do support the Disability Network report. I would also like to ask our recording secretary to make sure that this is on the next agenda at the Public Service Committee meeting. I think you recall back when we had this discussion, it was heated and very productive, but I was very supportive of a comprehensive plan for accessibility, so I'm really glad you brought this forward. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, so if there is someone else that has something that they would like added to the budget priorities, please make sure that it is in writing in two sherrys, so that when we're looking at it before the meeting, we've had a chance to review it and, and then go over it as we go through this plan at the end. All right? Any other questions? Seeing none, we are adjourned for about five minutes, and then we'll start our council Yes.
Has anyone signed into speed?
Yes.
Have you been here before? Have kind of-
Correct.
... a rule?
No, no, next Monday we'll be in.
It's the referral.
It's just a referral tonight. We're-